H RAC is presenting to council tonight on recommendations around community safety. I wanted to read this paragraph out of the memo that city council got. The B P D and H RAC inquiry sessions arose following the killing of George Floyd and the renewed visibility of the racial justice movement. In early June twenty twenty, when B P D leadership expressed a desire to reach out and engage in community conversations, staff suggests beginning with H RAC, an existing body of community advisors that has long had an interest and overlap in purpose with policing issues. The inquiry sessions were then created with the following purpose in mind. To create a dedicated space for listening and dialogue between community members and B P D leadership regarding operations, policy and response to the current community demands for police reform and the consideration of other long term structural and community oversight. Goal number two, cultivate relationships between the Beaverton Police Department and the Human Rights Advisory Commission. Support and increase access to B P data and information. Provide recommendations on policing change and community oversight. And four, map out a path towards a tangible police changes in response to community demands. So I wanted the community to know that this was partly driven by our own police department. This was driven by council's desire to have this conversation start somewhere. So tonight, we're going to hear the recommendations of six months of intense work from the Human Rights Advisory Commission. It's important for the community to understand that no action will be taken tonight based off this information. My hope as mayor on behalf of the city council that we can have a meaningfully meaningful dialogue and start our conversation tonight and exit this session with a clear understanding of what the community is asking us to do. And for the council to make meaningful action through followed work, whether it's future meetings where we discuss things in detail. With that, I want to turn it over to Paulo, the staff liaison for the Human Rights Advisory Commission.
Hello, everyone. How are you doing? I'll just go up nodding heads and hellos. Yeah, so it's it's kind of odd that we're finally here. I know myself and H RAC membership Laurel, Dory, and Joy somewhere in there. We've all been spending the last actually seven plus months working on this. And so we have the three chairs here with us today on the on H RAC. And I just want to give a personal thank you. I don't even know where to begin. I could easily take up the rest of this hour to just talk about your commitment to this work and not only commitment to the work, but also your for the general health of everybody contributing to this work. And so you've done so much. I'm sure you've lost some sleep. Thank you so much for being here. And I hope that all of us as public servants also really take what they share tonight into account as we continue to serve moving forward. And so I will actually go ahead and turn it back over to Dory. And yeah.
Thank you, Paulo. And I will start us off tonight. And so I'm going to start. The council sees a lot of PowerPoint presentations, so I went to relieve your fears that you might be sitting here through thirty PowerPoint slides. You will not. This is an interactive discussion and we hope to engage you in further in the information that Mayor Beatty provided and the recommendations that H RAC would like to present. So with that, I am going to share screen. So as Mayor Beatty said, our work did start six months ago. I wanted to start with the Human Rights Advisory Commission agreements. These are agreements that the members of H RAC created last year. They're created a new each year. And I am hoping that folks can take these agreements and hopefully use them tonight. The ones that I would highlight are be respectful, keep an open mind, be willing to accept feedback, and most importantly, remember whom we serve and why we serve. So H RAC, for everyone here, just to know, it is a voluntary commission. So that means that everybody that serves on the commission serves in a voluntary position. Excuse me. So we thought a good place to start our conversation and is really looking at the mission of both the Beaverton Police Department and the Human Rights Commission. So we begin this tonight with this discussion of mission. And mission is really, it's our pledge, our promise, our commitment to the community and to the people that we serve in the community. It is an anchor for us. So the question we should ask whenever we undertake any work is how does this work fit within our mission? So looking at this mission, I just wanted to offer folks the opportunity to unmute their mics and raise the words that stand out for them.
Are you asking the council that?
Yes, absolutely. Please unmute, share what you notice about the wording of both the Beaverton Police Department mission and the Human Rights Advisory Commission. It could be a phrase that hits you and and tell us, please tell us why that phrase strikes you as important.
Well, I'll start. And to me, it's courage. And I think people often think about courage as in somebody doing something based on another event happening to them. But as a veteran, courage means doing the right thing at the right time, all the time. And that word stood out to me.
Thank you, Mayor Beatty. Others?
I was gonna say compassion and then mutual understanding because I see both of those sort of linked hand in hand.
Yeah, definitely some links between the Beaverton Police Department mission and the Human Rights Advisory Commission's mission. Thank you, Council Hassan. Other things that stand out?
Thank you. I think that for me, safeguard the rights of all citizens. And I always use that interchangeable with our residents and being able to do that with integrity. I think those are hands in hands, kind of just lockstep, and I really appreciate that.
I appreciate you bringing up that the word citizens appears in this document. And it is stated as citizens, but I would say that we're really, as Council Mitchell said, safeguarding and protecting the rights of all of our community members. Other things that came up for folks?
Yeah, I'm I'll I'll focus on the two words of understanding and integrity, both of which I think are crucial for all of us.
Yes, we are building an understanding jointly tonight. And to work with integrity means to work with our beliefs at the center and what we believe to be true and best for all of the folks that we serve. Thank you all for doing that thought exercise with us. We'll do a few more of these as we go through tonight. So once we move from mission, we need to look at vision. And vision is going to inform a lot of what we're going to talk about tonight. The vision for the Beaverton Police Department is up here. It has certain portions highlighted in blue. The blue portions really speak to the work that the Beaverton Police Department and H RAC looked at closely. One of the themes that came up as we did this work over the last six or seven months, in particular compassion and respect. So compassion and respect are really interesting ideas because they're abstract concepts. So in looking at a depth for a definition of compassion, we might lean on the work of Karen Armstrong, who is a theologian. And Karen Armstrong wrote a charter called the Charter for Compassion. And that Charter for Compassion very specifically states that, and I quote, motivating us, compassion motivates us to alleviate the suffering of others, to honor and respect all life, and to treat everyone with justice, fairness, and respect. In this definition of compassion, it recognizes the equality of everyone and our human connection and interdependence on each other. The word respect can be interpreted in so many different ways, and there are many different definitions. But in this case, respect means upholding and understanding the traditions, the wishes and the rights of other people. What came up in our discussions over and over again over the last seven months? And Chief Groucho can confirm this. That idea that's highlighted in the very last sentence, the Beaverton Police Department being a leading agency. This came up over and over again, that the Beaverton Police Department wants to be innovative and transformative in the work that they do. I want to make sure that I've captured that correctly. So Chief, did I capture that idea correctly? I don't want to misspeak for what you were thinking as the leader of that department.
Yes, you did. Sorry, I couldn't unmute. Thank you, Dory.
You're welcome, Chief. So the final piece to really frame this work is what is H RAC? So the Human Rights Advisory Commission, as I said, is a volunteer commission. This is the mission that is stated and our purpose from the actual city code. So it really says, and I think it's really important, that given all the social political context that Mayor Beatty started stated earlier on, that the role of the Human Rights Advisory Commission, also known as H RAC, is to really make sure that human rights and values and principles are upheld. This view leads us to acknowledge that black people in the United States of America are more likely to have deadly encounters with police officers and to affirm not only that black lives matter, but they are treasured in this community. So that's why we join you here today, because this really says it is our job as H RAC folks to look at how we can integrate human rights, values, and principles, especially in the Beaverton Police Department. So to get us started on our work tonight, now that we've got some good anchors, we really need to breathe. Breath is life giving. Breath is what some people don't get. So we are all lucky enough and privileged enough to be able to do that tonight. So I would ask us to take three deep breaths. And if you choose to turn off your camera, that is fine. And I will just guide us through that count of three breaths. Then we'll do some visioning and then we will do some sharing. So if you would like to turn off your camera, please take a moment and do that, and I'll start counting our breaths. One. Two. Three. As you need to this evening, please note where you are and come back as you need to your breath. So here is our visioning piece. And for this part afterwards, I will ask that people do turn off their cameras if they can because it will help people to have space to think. When you envision a system that ensures the safety of everyone in Beaverton, what does that look like? We'll ask people to share out their thoughts in about two minutes. You'll hear my voice and I will call you back. So folks, we are ready to reconvene and gather. Two minutes can either seem like the longest amount of time you've ever had in your life or the shortest amount of time and everything in between. So we're waiting for a few more people to turn on their cameras and rejoin us.
I'm here. It's just not letting me start my video.
Do we have a staff member running tech tonight?
Yeah, it just says the host has stopped it.
So that is fine, folks.
Same here.
Great. So I will say, and this is my disclaimer, I'm an educator. So chaos appeals to me a lot because chaos leads to really fabulous thinking. So we're going to do what's called popcorning. People are just going to put out a thought. We're going to do this for about three minutes. I'm going to attempt to record them all on paper so that we will be able to use your ideas as we go through these recommendations. So anyone who wants to speak, please go ahead and unmute and speak your ideas about what you envision.
Welcoming.
Welcoming. Thank you.
Collaboration.
Cooperation.
Co-op- cooperation, collaboration.
And collaboration. Thank you for clarifying.
Sensitive.
Sensitive.
Evolution.
Evolution. And it is also okay to put them into the chat if you do not have the ability to speak words right now orally.
Housing.
And to me, it's the right people doing the right work.
Oh, people doing the right work. I'm sorry, I missed that one?
Mine was housing.
Housing. Thank you. Calm. Thank you. Any others come to mind?
This is Allison. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thanks, Council tonight.
We're going with just one word. Okay, I would say that we feel that we can assume that others will believe we are innocent unless their actions prove otherwise.
A basic human right. Thank you. Anything else that came to mind? Well, thank you. With that, we'd like to go through the recommendations. I have your list in mind because I think it's so interesting how your list very much connects to the last seven months of work that folks have done. Collaboration, being sensitive and culturally effective. I would say housing really speaks to me because it's saying that community safety is more than the police department. It is many things and many choices and many decisions that you all will make that will lead to a safer community. Calm. When people are safe, there's a level of calm that comes very much like breathing because they can breathe, because they can be present. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Joy, who is going to present the first few recommendations. And then Laurel will follow. And as they are working with you, they're also facilitating conversation, just as I did. So I want to appreciate all of you for going through those exercises with me. And Joy, it's all yours.
Thank you, Dory. Dory, can I impose on you to share your screen with the proper slide?
Absolutely.
That'd be great. Madam Mayor, City Council, fellow commission members and whoever's watching on TV. Thank you for the opportunity to present today, and I really appreciate the opportunity to have a say. I wanted to also take a moment and express my gratitude at the amazing people that I've had the privilege to work with, including the that when we took this project on, we already had a dialogue with the appropriate police organizations and then we're joined by the chief, which is awesome. So let me just want that out there, how amazing it's been. So after the events of the summer with George Floyd and we came together to try and address this human right thing that was going on in our shared consciousness as a community. Taking something as large as community safety is a huge undertaking and it's a large subject. So we got together and divided it into five sections around community safety, which is our goal. And so we are dealing with the folks. So that would involve the hiring, training, and retention of police officers as well as connecting with community members. And there was lots of feedback about the School Resource Officer Program. I will confess that I do not have children in our system and that does fall to another council member or committee member to address. And also trust between all of the members includes policy, good policy, and transparency. And in examining policy, are there areas where policy could be addressed or changed? So that's how we came up with these particular topics to break our work into. The first one, policy, we last summer, when there was an inquiry session with Allen Wyoming Deloitte, there was lots of question answers, discussions about how can we create trust within a community? What is the perception within the community? Not just voices within our commission, but within the greater community as well. And what came up and kept coming up was the concept of eight can't wait in the wake of the ex- exposure of police brutality in other places. And I don't know if you're aware, but just for review, the full list of eight can't wait are one, to ban chokeholds and strangleholds. Two, require de-escalation. Three, require warning before shooting. Four, to require exhausting all alternatives before shooting. Five, the duty to intervene. Six, to ban shooting at moving vehicles. Seven, to require the use of force continuum. And eight, to require comprehensive reporting. And to that end, as we had conversations with Chief Groucho, who's awesome, it was found that at least four of these and some in other places more, the recommendations of eight can't wait closely mirror existing police policies. And so this is fairly easily addressed and adopted. And would, it was the belief, both in the inquiry sessions with the long and within our community in H RAC, that would help to facilitate that policy change would help facilitate more trust more within our system here in the city of Beaverton. Also, during our, we we made use of experts in the field since I'm not an expert and I'm not going to pretend to be one on TV either. But in our September Advisory Commission setting, we had Michael German, who's from the Brennan Center for Justice, their leading agency in police policy. And we learned a lot. That was a really amazing meeting, if you have time to watch it. But studies have shown that using an escalated force model to subdue protesters actually makes things worse. And so the committee adopted, makes the recommendation to adopt a policy of not doing that. And third, under policy changing, changes. We've had many really enlightening discussions, especially with the chief, about prioritizing funding of community resources. Because by the time you call the police, that's after the fact. So preventing some of the things that cause problems within the community by prioritizing community resources like mental health support, addiction treatment, community-based social workers, educational and vocational programs, and affordable housing. And in fact, it's my understanding that the county model, which has a police team that includes a mental health professional is in at least discussions here in Beaverton so that for a mental health call, that the appropriate professional would be showing up. We all agree, everyone gets hurt in a fight. Nobody. I remember having this conversation with the police that no police officer wants to go on a mental health call. That's not the right skill set. And so that would go a long way toward this recommendation. Next slide, please. And then, community safety, which involves having a more accessible, more accessible is the right word, relationship with the police in general. So having a dashboard, a computer based on their website dashboard to see what's going on. So having a dashboard, a computer-based on their website dashboard to see what's going on, to be able to measure metrics that are meaningful to the community. The police department, early in this year, brought the report about racism in policing, which did indicate that they're not racist in how they police. And I will say, as much as I worked with charts and statistics, I was still confused by all of the ways it measured. It was, I'm sure, very good, but not understandable unless you're an expert. So this is about setting up something that is user-friendly for folks who are not experts, and be able to track what's going on with the police department. And the third recommendation that we kept coming to was creating some sort of citizen board or commission to work with the police, so that if there is a serious incident, the community and the police work together for communication and for figuring out what happened. And it would improve the relationship between the citizens and the police to know that there's light, there's not that there's some accessibility to what's going on, so that we all feel like we're all part of it. Because as a community, we are all part of it. Thank you for letting me present tonight.
Thank you, Joy.
So I'm gonna finish this out here. My name is Laurel Grass McBlock. Dory, if I can impose on you to keep presenting the slides, I like having this, that way I can keep my notes open on another, on another screen over here. So I'm Laurel Grass McBlock. I am currently the Chair of HREC. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about our, the final section of our recommendations, and I'm also going to lead you in. I'm gonna give you some questions to think about. I, Mayor BD already knows this, but you are getting a double punch of two educators with you tonight. So if you're noticing that we're asking you to do a lot of work, that's why. Dory, do you mind going to the next slide for me? Oh, oh, thank you. As I say, I think you're on it, but that's perfect. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, I want to frame what I want to say a little bit before I dive into this, which is what I noticed with that visioning exercise at the beginning, is I think, and what I saw consistently with our work in HREC over this past chunk of time, through this entire inquiry process, I honestly think we all have the same why. I think that every person I've talked to wants to live in a safe community and wants to live in a community that's not just safe for themselves, but that's safe for others. I really truly believe that everyone wants that. And where, what your job as counselors is, is to figure out the how. How do we get there? And what we felt our job as HREC was, was to come up with some potential paths. And what we're really calling on you to do is that you're the decision makers, and now it's your turn to step in and see which of these possible how paths you're going to take on. What I would encourage you to do as you listen to these is frame this in terms of continuing, how do you continue to ask yourself, what is working? How can we do more of it? And how do I know if something is working? So what I wanted to highlight about these two sections of recommendations, so this has to do with hiring, training, and retention. What I want to frame this with, first of all, is we know, we know that diversity is a source of spring. We know that organizations that are more diverse are more effective. I would ask you to consider, what would a police department that authentically reflects the Beaverton community look like? You don't have to answer that, but I do want you to spend just a moment thinking about that, really picturing what would a police department that authentically reflects our community look like? And I also want to frame these two recommendations with a caution, which is that one thing that we see across organizations is that there's a, there's a great danger of tokenism, and there's a great danger of magical thinking. If this needs to be part of a cultural, so this move toward hiring and retaining officers from underrepresented groups, that needs to be part of a cultural shift. It, it is an important part of a cultural shift, but it cannot lead the way on shifting the culture. And I think that there are lots of cautionary tales about when it goes wrong to just hire a whole bunch of people who don't look like the people who are currently in there, and think that that's going to be what's going to shift it. So that has to be part of a shift. Dory, would you mind going to the next one for me? Thank you so much. So relatedly, we talked a lot in our, we, again and again and again, through our process. And if, if you think back to the very beginning of this presentation, when we talked about our, one of the calls that we put out to you, harkening back to our norms as a group, is this question of why do you serve and whom do you serve? Our, part of why I'm here tonight, and part of why I've been engaged in this work with HREC, is because I believe in the power of amplifying voices that aren't at the table. So I always like to ask the question, who, who has a seat at the table and who doesn't? And where we came again and again and again as a commission, was looking at that concept. And one of our strongest recommendations are, are like overarching recommendation, is that whatever, so thinking back to that idea of, we agree on the why, it's your job to come up with the path toward that. One concept that we came back to again and again and again and again is, it is essential, it is essential that the voices and perspectives of marginalized people, particularly the Black and Brown community, lead the way in this work. That those be the voices that are centered and prioritized. So we would really challenge you as an, as a, as a body, to look at the question of how are you prioritizing gathering BIPOC perspectives? And how are you actually using those, those perspectives to change practice and policy? So that's, and that's different from, again, connecting back to that idea of hiring is a really good start, it can't be the only action. This is very different than asking marginalized people to do the work of fixing a system that has harmed them. When you are a person in a position of power, especially a person in a position of power that, as part of a system that has done harm, the first step is recognizing that harm. And I am very grateful that one thing that I've seen consistently throughout this process is the willingness of the Beaverton Police Department and City Council to step in and at least ask the question, are we doing harm? It is, it would be, it, it won't work as a path forward to simply say, well, we're gonna find someone to fix this for us. But what we do really want to push you to do is ask, take specific action steps for building authentic relationships. So if one of, so if the goal is to gather BIPOC perspectives, is to use those perspectives to actually make change, continue to ask, what does that look like from, what does an authentic relationship look like? And how do we make that work last beyond? How do we make that go beyond being a tokenistic movement of inclusion and toward an actual movement of, of radical change? Yes, thanks, Dory. So this was, we talked a lot about SROs, and we have circled back and circled around and circled to this question. And I know, City Council, I know, because I, in my other role, not as an HREC member, but in my role as a Beaverton teacher, I know that you've gotten a letter, a long letter, all about the SRO program, I know because I signed it. And I know that you've heard a lot about SROs. And so I'm gonna tell you more about SROs, because I think it's really important. But mostly what I'm gonna do is, I'm just gonna ask you a lot of questions. And again, I'm not expecting that you're gonna answer them tonight. So after extensive discussion, and I really would encourage council members, please do read the full document that we sent. We covered, we felt that we couldn't capture the full complexity of the discussion that we as a group had in a simple bullet point. We did end with a simple bullet point of a recommendation. And the recommendation that our commission voted for moving forward with was to recommend the removal of SROs from schools within the Beaverton School District. And I want to talk about the questions that I want you to consider when you hear that recommendation. What evidence do we have that SROs make schools safer? We've put, we've asked here to the recommend, we've recommended here, explore the effectiveness of SRO programs on school safety. The joint letter that you've received already from the educator community has asked that same question. What data are we using to support the inclusion of SROs in schools? I would ask you to really, really challenge yourself on that question. Ask yourself, so let's go back to that concept of we're envisioning a community of safety. You're envisioning a school that is safe. If you erased your, your current assumptions of what schools do look like, and asked yourself what schools could look like, I would ask that question of what, what do children actually need? And I would even go farther and say, what does safety really mean? What does safety really look like? What? As we, so we talked about, we are really going to continue to push for the importance of not just hearing BIPOC voices, not just hearing marginalized voices, but acting based on those marginalized voices. I would ask, in the context of the question of school resource officers specifically, what can you do to center the voices and experiences of students? So what are you as a body doing to ask the question of students in a meaningful, authentic way? What are their experiences with school resource officers? What are you doing to center the voices and experiences of families, especially Black and Brown families? Whose voices are heard and whose aren't? So I'm, I always say, I'm a nice white lady who lives in the suburbs, and I have a minivan. I'm a teacher, my voice gets heard a lot. I have a lot of students whose voices aren't being heard. And so that's what I would ask. That's what I always like to come back to, is this idea of, we, every, honestly, every single person who's on the Zoom call is here as a representative of something. Right? That we are not just here as single people, we are each here as representatives of a greater whole. How are we getting all of those voices here?
Well, you've asked so many great questions. Give the counselors some time, and the mayor, to throw out their questions, what's coming up for them? Do we want to hear, take a few minutes to do that? Because I think we're about 14 minutes away from the end of time.
I think that's perfect. And then I would like us to use that to seg into those other questions that we had brought forward in the memo. So that is perfect. So yeah, so we want to turn it over to you for questions for us. And you can direct those to any of us individually or to us as a group. So if you want to go ahead and unmute yourself, go for it.
So it's been our typical fashion for counselors just to speak up and ask questions. I, I'm okay with that, but I'm asking you to recognize if you are taking a lot of space to ask a question and move on. So with that, I will allow the council to ask first.
This is Allison, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. First of all, thank you so much. The, the pace of this, the way that you've framed the conversation, you brought everyone into it together. And I really appreciate the thoughtfulness you took to, to pull together these presentations and present to us tonight. Thank you for your time in doing that. I, I have kind of a historic question that's related to the the recommendation for creating an oversight committee. And I have a lot of questions about that. To just wrap my head around what it would look like, how, how it would do its job, how members would be selected for it, when they would be called in, what types of access would they have, like, you know, I immediately go to the, how do you actually implement something like that? And it got me thinking about the Human Rights Advisory Committee itself. And from what I remember, it was, it's one of our oldest committees, I think. I think it, it's like from the 90s? And I'm wondering why it was created in the first place? Like, was there, was there something that happened that triggered the need for it? I'd love to know the history of it, because in my conversations with a former member of it, it sounded like its original intent was to serve like that, to be a place where people in the community could come to talk about their interactions with the police, to talk about other, other areas of where they felt unsafe in their community, or like their rights were being violated. I think it was even a function of HR for the city before the HR department existed, if I'm remembering that correctly. So it seems like there's some really interesting historical context to, to you as a committee, and the role that it's played in our city. And I, I would like to see that continue on in a way, as we continue to talk about how we create transparency and oversight. Maybe we already created it. You know, maybe this committee already exists in what we're talking about. So I don't know if that's a question, it's just like this lightbulb moment that I had during, during your conversation, but I wanted to throw that out there.
I want to, thank you so much, Counselor Tiff. And I, I wanted to emphasize, I realized there was a detail that we that I wanted to just really, really emphasize. In our discussions of what could that type of a group look like, we talked around and around and around, and there are a lot of logistics. And one of the strongest recommendations that we wanted to make is that the, the city of Beaverton hire an expert to determine what would that look like? Because those questions of, and what's the best way, and what does this look like? So I think that, that, just wanted to make sure that that was on your, everybody's radar too.
And it's also relevant to know that the state legislature is taking up this concept right now. And so a good place for people to look towards is that. And write, write in support comments in, and so council might not even be able to be the deciders of that coming.
And I'm just, I just want to jump in. I just want to take a moment and like, recognize the work of this commission. I got to join in late. I've been a community member, kind of watching on the sidelines. But to see y'all, in really one meeting deliberate, discuss, talk about how we could do this, how we can put forth these recommendations. So I'm really thankful for the recommendations that you've put together. I'm really thankful for the partnership that the Beaverton Police has had with you. I think the more I listen to you, and the more I listen to the community, the more I realize that we've been asking police to do the work that maybe isn't their work. Like, when we look at the issues that we're seeing, like homelessness, access to healthcare, amongst other things, I think that I, I think we've put a strain on our police, and we've said, okay, do all these things, fix all of these things. And when I listen to your recommendations, and when I listen to the community, what I hear is that we need to make sure we're putting the right people to work at the right time for the right services. And I'm really thankful that you all have had this conversation and been so open, and just everything that, all that work. It's, this is really big body of work, and I'm really excited to, to It's, this is really big body of work and I'm really excited to, to, to do it with you. I actually wholeheartedly agree with a lot of the recommendations and look forward to how we can start continuing to move forward. So thank you for all that you've done, HREC and BPD and staff, Paolo. Thank you.
I would want to also throw out one thing and just emphasize this point. The initial work that Ellen Wyoming Deloye did really highlighted some areas of concern, I think for City Council to consider. And Laurel alluded to these. Overall, the communication with communities of color here in Beaverton and measuring how strong those relationships are, right? So I think that is another piece where there is a interconnection between that initial survey work that Ellen Wyoming Deloye did and the work that the commission has done. And Mark, I think you were going to say something before I launched on.
Yeah, I'm okay, listening. That's, that's, that's what we're here for tonight and talking a little. I just want to thank you all too. I was, was honored to be able to be the council liaison last year and, and, and listen and hear the concerns and the ideas and the thoughts of, of HREC and, and also of, of the police department. I, where we are lucky, we have a, a wonderful chief who, who participates well and listens well and, and communicates really well. So I, I, I feel like we have a really good foundation to get, to get some work done. And it's a matter of where do we start? How do we start? And, and what can we pay attention to and, and move early? So that's, that's kind of how I am looking at the work. I'm, I'm thankful for the whole committee to put together the recommendations and now, now we can start working on the how, right? And that's, that's all I have for right now. I've, I've thought a lot about this and then trying to figure out as we work as a council, kind of what next steps are. And I think we do going into tonight, that this was not going to be a, a one and done council meeting that we take recommendations and say, okay, we're good. This is going to be an ongoing body of work and we just need to make sure we get it organized. So we can, we can start somewhere and start making some progress.
Just a couple of quick thoughts. First of all, thank you for bringing the, the report forward. It was a lot of hard work between you and the department to, to put all of this together and bring it forward in, in such an elegant fashion. What, what I know I have been doing, and I suspect some of my colleagues or all of my colleagues have been doing is considering these materials and also considering what was brought forward by the Ellen Wyoming Deloye report, which we've had a chance to look at, but we haven't had a chance to talk about. And so I think that for me, process wise, the next steps for the city council to get together with whoever our city manager and our chief think are appropriate for us to sit and talk with and to talk about what steps we need to take next in order to develop the policies and the programs and the structures that we want to do. And I know, for instance, one opinion that I share with, with the recommendations is that a third party would be a useful part of that process. But I think we need to talk through how that third party would work, would help us, which parts of the problem that, that third party would help us with. So I look forward to another conversation at the council meeting, more on a work session format where we can kind of drill into identifying next steps that are concrete next steps and not just continuing to frame the problem. I think we have to, you know, dig in and start identifying what we're going to do. Thank you.
With the tiny bit of time.
Thank you so much for all of your, thank you so much for all of your work and all of the thoughtful considerations that went into things. I appreciate the exercises that we did beforehand because I think it really set the tone for pretty calm thinking. And I, I have a lot of questions that I think would be great to present to my fellow counselors. And, and you know, who do we bring to the table when we're talking about these recommendations? How do we get these recommendations implemented? What do the recommendations exactly look like in implementation phases? So I just appreciate the work very much and look forward to deciding what next steps look like.
Go ahead, Laurel.
Thank you so much. I wanted to end us with one very deep question. So we started with a big, broad philosophical envisioning and I want to end us there as well. And the question that I want us to end on tonight is as much as, and, and I have to say, I'm, I thank you for wanting to end on action and concrete. I also live in the realm of big ideas. Here's where I want us to end tonight. One of the questions that we wanted to pose to each of you is how can this, how can the city benefit from enacting the recommendations that we've outlined? How can the city benefit from enacting the recommendations that we've outlined? And what I would love is if we could take, I'm going to do a classic teacher thing, if we could do a quick whip around and if each person could share maybe just one concept, one soundbite, when you hear that idea, how could the city benefit from enacting these recommendations?
I'll go ahead and kick you off because we're batting up against the times. So we're going to go a couple of minutes over and the next group will be angry about that, but we're okay. So for me, if we outlined and enacted all of the recommendations that you've outlined, I think it goes back to the first question that you asked us tonight. I would imagine it is a system that ensures the safety of everyone in Beaverton.
I, I go back to something that was brought up in some of the HREC discussions, and that was, how do we do everything in our power to try and prevent some of the horrific things that have happened in other communities? And, and looking at it from how, how can we, how can we put policy and practice in place that does as best as we can to, to prevent, prevent some of those atrocities?
Good words from my fellow counselor. Thank you, sir.
I can go. I think the city could benefit from enacting these recommendations by showing that we are listening to our communities and our people. And I hope that we continue to have this conversation. And I want to add that as council does decide next steps, I hope that we can all invite you back into those conversations, if that is something that interests you. Because I do think that you all coming forward and, and sharing this with us shows your commitment to it and want to make sure we continue to include those voices.
Yeah, this is Allison. I, I think that 2020 was the year of reckoning on so many levels. And I think, you know, Beaverton, it's, it's easy to think everything is great because we have such a, a safe community compared to a lot of other cities our size. And, you know, we say we have great schools, we have great quality of life. But we, we have heard, especially recently in the conversation of SROs and from the Spanish point of, of kids that don't inherently feel safe when they see someone in uniform because of past experience or something that they witnessed or, or just felt. I think there's, there is so much emotion in finally being heard. It doesn't fix it, but the community knowing that we're addressing this in itself is important. Actually moving from there to taking action demonstrates that we, we really are handling this reckoning that we're all going through as a community together in a way that hopefully will mean that every single person who lives in it feels the same level of safety. Feels that when they call for help, they'll get the same type of response. And again, back to the thing I said at the beginning, that they will be presumed innocent based on what they look like, unless their actions prove otherwise. Just that feeling that you can go through life and feel safe in your community and that others around you feel safe is, it's a, that's, that's the, the goal in, in my opinion. So, um, yeah, this is, as Counselor Fagan said, this is, this isn't a one and done. It's the beginning of a, of a journey and probably one of the biggest issues this council is going to tackle in a year where there's going to be a lot of things to tackle. So thank you for presenting it to us in the first month of this very important year.
All right. As far as the recommendations go, I think the, the city will benefit from hearing from the recommendations in the way that they understand that we are available to listen. And I think that's the biggest thing. And then being able to listen to what the recommendations are and come up with a course of action really shows the community that we are here for them. So I think that makes it more real for people and it benefits them.
Thank you. I'm going to wrap this up because we are over time. Joy, Laurel, thank you for bringing us along in your educator journey. And I would say, Ms. King, you are one of the best facilitators we've had at City Council in a long, long time. And I want to thank you for your work and I want to not just thank you for your work, but I want to promise as the mayor of Beaverton, I'm going to work to make sure that these recommendations come before council. I can't promise what the outcome will be, but your guys' six months and work, intense work with our police chief and police department doesn't go unnoticed. And the best way we can honor your work beyond listening to you, that's the easy part, is getting to work with action. So like Counselor Isan said, I want to invite you back into the process. If that's a position and role that you see your guys as playing. And I'd love us to make a work plan to address all of these in individual conversations. So I will work with our city manager to create a plan for us to address them in the upcoming months. And like Counselor San Soucy alluded, we have some tough conversations ahead of us with Ms. Deloye's report that came out. We've heard it, we've been sitting on it. The council has heard a lot from our community and it's time for action. And so that's what I can pledge to you tonight. I think it's also important, if you're watching, the questions that were presented by HREC that we didn't get to are some really good talking points, well thought out. I wish we could have had a whole nother hour to go into them. So I, I, let's work to get together to come back. You three are fantastic. I was wondering why you guys had three chairs, but apparently this tri-chair works really well. So thank you tonight and I'm going to move us into our next meeting, which I believe, do we have to adjourn from this Zoom and enter into a different one? Correct?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. Well, with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you, HREC, and I will see everyone else in our next meeting.